All right, welcome everybody. We will call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for June 27, 2022 to order. The clerk will help me with the roll, please.
Burton.
Here.
Clary.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mohaw.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten present.
Okay, thank you. Under public comment, I did want to make a couple of comments here real quick. As everybody knows, we were a little bit one day shortchanged with our Heritage Days celebration this year. However, Sunday did, we had wonderful weather and we had a lot of good help. We have our sponsors that without them, I wanted to mention them, without them it wouldn't be possible. We had our festival sponsors, Skennell. Skennell is the property that's working in conjunction with General Mills out at the new 1,300,000 square foot dry storage facility that we were able to, fortunate enough to be able to have them invest here. They were a festival sponsor, UW Health. We had First Northern Credit Union, Magna Cunis. We had Cosmopolitan International, Stellantis, Hamblock Ford Lincoln, Fiesta Market, and the Boone County Arts Council. We also had contributing sponsors, ComEd, Belvedere Rotary Club, Big Rig Travels, Casey's, Kelly Williamson Company, Walmart, and First Northern Bank of Omaha. Without them, obviously, they're a big part of it and we're grateful for them making their gracious contributions, so thank you to them. I also wanted to mention the Public Works, our Public Works employees, Jim Roman, who they had to do a lot of extra putting up and then taking down and then putting up again of barricades and what have you, so thank you very much. It went across without any hitches. Also Gina Abbey, our Police Department, Fire Department, our VIPs, Erica, and Don Banks, who is our event, who starts our parade. It's rumored that this might have been his last year, but he did a great job. I certainly wouldn't want to have been at the front of that trying to organize that to get everybody going for a parade, so thank you to Don. Also the Papa Grove Airport, they were the ones that had initially offered the idea of having the aircraft come over to start the parade, kick it off, and I thought that was very nice. I had a lot of compliments on it. We'll do a post-mortem, I guess, of the parade as we go, but I have to say that there was a lot of people downtown and appreciate all their willingness to come out and support our event. And all in all, I think it was a great event, so thank you to everybody. I'm sure I missed somebody, I know I did, but I'll catch them as we go. I will make sure and note them as well, so thank you everybody for that. Also under public comment, Alderman Freeman, I think, would like to address public. Step up to the podium, please.
As you all know, my name is Marsha Freeman and I currently represent the citizens of Belvedere as their 5th Ward Alderman. I wrote this speech I'm about to give on the premise that all politics begin at the local level, and because I have been elected to a position of leadership, it is my solemn duty to lead. As ordinances and resolutions passed by this body either positively or negatively only affect the citizens of Belvedere, they are no less significant than the laws and statutes passed by our elected state representatives whose actions or inactions profoundly affect every citizen residing within the borders of the state of Illinois. Individual municipalities have zero power or jurisdiction to override state laws whether we agree with them or not. The people we choose to lead at the federal level of our democracy are entrusted with the daunting task of making decisions that affect our entire country. Just as our residents are bound to abide by the rules we set at the local level, and residents of all 50 states are bound to abide by the laws set forth at their respective state level, no state, big city, small town, or rural county is immune to the policies passed into law at the federal level. We have no recourse but to abide by them as set forth in our beloved Constitution. Our only resort is protest, either in the streets, at state capitals, local city council meetings, the ballot box, or all of the above. As a leader, it is my duty to speak up and speak out locally on the most recent Supreme Court ruling overturning Roe v. Wade. My protest starts here, at this podium where I have a voice. I'll start by reciting a passage I read whose author I do not know, but depicts my view and that of nearly 70% of the people in the country I live, a clear and present majority. I am not pro-murdering babies. I am pro Brenda, who found out at her 20-week anatomy scan that the infant she had been so excited to bring into this world had developed without life-sustaining organs. I am pro Susan, who was sexually assaulted on her way home from work, only to come to the horrific realization that her assailant planted his seed in her when she got a positive pregnancy test result a month later. I am pro Teresa, who hemorrhaged due to a placental abruption, causing her parents, spouse, and children to have to make the impossible decision on whether to save her or her unborn child. I am pro little Kathy, who had her innocence ripped away from her by someone she should have been able to trust, and her 11-year-old body isn't mature enough to bear the consequence of that betrayal. I am pro Melissa, who's working two jobs just to make ends meet and has to choose between bringing another child into poverty or feeding the children she already has because her spouse walked out on her. I'm pro Brittany, who realizes that she is in no way financially, emotionally, or physically able to raise a child. I am pro Emily, who went through IVF, ending up with six viable implanted eggs, requiring selective reduction to ensure the safety of her and a safe number of fetuses. I am pro Jessica, who is finally getting the strength to get away from her physically abusive spouse, only to find out that she is carrying the monster's child. I am pro Vanessa, who went into her confirmation appointment after years of trying to conceive, only to hear silence where there should be a heartbeat. I am pro Lindsay, who lost her virginity in her sophomore year with a broken condom, and now has to choose whether to be a teenage mom or just a teenager. I am pro Courtney, who just found out she's already 13 weeks along, but the egg never made it out of her fallopian tube, so either she terminates the pregnancy or risks dying from internal bleeding. You can argue and say that I am pro-choice all you want, but the truth is, I'm pro-life, their lives, women's lives. You don't get to pick and choose which scenarios should be accepted. It's not about which stories you don't agree with. It's about fighting for the women in the stories that you do agree with and the agonizing choice that was ultimately made. I find it ironic that the same Republicans who fought so hard and rallied against any form of life-saving mandates during COVID are perfectly fine with mandating pregnancy. There is a term for living beings who have no control over their reproduction. That term is livestock. Since the conservative-appointed justices have now ruled that body autonomy is not protected under the Constitution, does that now mean that if I suffer kidney failure and one of yours is a match that would save my life, you are now legally obligated to donate it to me? After all, the rights of life should extend to the actual living, and by refusing to save my life, by not giving up a kidney, not unlike that of saving a fetus, you would therefore logically be committing a felony, or is body autonomy now only unprotected for women? After all, the reason you can't claim a fetus on your tax return is because the government, our government, says it is not a person. As a 50-year precedent, Roe was considered settled law. Clearly, stare decisis meant nothing to the Trump-appointed justices, who blatantly lied during their confirmation hearings when they swore it did. So what's next? They are not done yet. Justice Thomas, in his ascension, has made it crystal clear they're coming for your birth control. That means yours. Even married couples will be denied the right to contraceptives. This leaves our daughters, granddaughters, and quite possibly your own wife's only option to be abstinent with their husbands unless they wish to conceive. A world where women are seen as breeders and sexual intercourse is performed for the sole purpose of conception. Does this conservative court really believe that women forced to give birth to unwanted children will be good moms? That somehow birthing a baby automatically makes you love and care for it? Do they have any idea how many unwanted children will be born to mothers who will neglect and abuse them out of sheer spite that they were forced to birth them in the first place? How many will be born into poverty? How many orphanages and an already overburdened foster care system will be overrun with unwanted children? Do they care? The answer is a resounding, all-too-obvious no. The real question is, do you? People need to understand that we're lucky, lucky to live in a state that currently supports women's health and protects our right to choose what is best for us, that our decisions and the life-altering choices we must make as women are between us, our family, our doctor, and our God. With the realization that we are only one Republican-controlled state legislature and governor away from having these protections stripped from us, that we are only one Republican-controlled federal Congress and president away from a national ban on a woman's right to healthcare, yes, abortion is healthcare. Ask yourself this when you're deciding on how to cast your vote in the upcoming midterm election. What kind of shithole country allows six unelected zealots, two of which are literally presiding in stolen seats, to impose their religion on everyone else? The short answer would be Iran. If we fail to act in November, the United States of America can and will be added to that list. For all you self-proclaimed pro-lifers cheering the decision, I employ you to go out and adopt the kids currently in an orphanage. It doesn't matter if you're mentally, financially, or emotionally ready. Go do it. Maybe you should be forced to against your will. You care so much, then go adopt kids that need a home. Oh, and not just the healthy, cute babies, but the older ones that have been without parents for years, and the ones that aren't so healthy, that got abandoned because they need someone to fight and care for them, the same way you all claim to care about the unborn. I also better not hear any more crap about parents seeking government help, because if you're so hell-bent on forcing someone to have a child because you can't refrain from adding your biblical two cents, then you better be willing to lay down some dollars as well, and lots of it. Admit it, it's not about the babies. It's never been about the babies. If it were, we'd have free, high-quality maternal care. You wouldn't be charged a cent to give birth, no matter how complicated your delivery was. We'd have months and months of paid paternal leave. If it were indeed about the babies, we'd have free lactation consultants, free diapers, and free formula. We would have excellent free and available childcare from birth. We would have universal preschool and pre-K along with guaranteed after-school programs. Y'all are adamant about saving the fetus with one hand while simultaneously throwing the baby out with the bath water with the other. It's never been about the baby. It's always been about control, control by the radical religious right wing of a Republican Party that has made itself unrecognizable to those of us who are old enough to remember when they stood for more. By the way, Happy Father's Day to all the soon-to-be dads in the red states who don't want kids. You think gas prices are high? Just wait till 18 years of child support kicks in over a one-night-stand. I'm not going to stand up here and tell you my own abortion story. I birthed five children, and the reason I chose not to birth six is frankly none of your effing business. I will tell you that my decision was not taken lightly, and it's one that I have not for one single second regretted. I chose not to celebrate Heritage Days this past weekend. I will no longer be standing for the Pledge of Allegiance as I cannot morally pledge my allegiance to a flag that promises liberty and justice for all in a country so divided that 30% of its population view women as livestock and does not, in fact, provide liberty for all. I will remain seated during the invocation as well since the Constitution clearly separates church and state. Forced religion and freedom from it is the bedrock of why our country was founded. I will be taking a knee whenever the National Anthem is played in solidarity with the women and girls in my country whose constitutional rights have been eliminated or are now at risk. I will march, I will protest, I will scream from every rooftop for every mother, grandmother, daughter, granddaughter, sister, niece, and aunt, both yours and mine, until our rights as women are nationally protected, because we cannot allow a world where our daughters have fewer rights than their mothers and grandmothers. Just to be clear, I am independent and I vote as such. I was highly critical of Barack Obama and I do not like Joe Biden. I can accept that my friends, family, and fellow Americans have different political opinions than I do on varying topics. We can always either find common ground or agree to disagree. I cannot, however, accept my friends, family, and fellow Americans holding beliefs that deny people human rights while forcing their personal religious beliefs on the population. This is not the same America my marine veteran father, army veteran brother, and air force veteran son signed up to serve. Therefore, it is my opinion, and I take pride in the fact that it is an educated one, that no one has done more to hurt America than Donald Trump and his supporters.
Also, before I end with the public comment, I did forget to thank some of the aldermen that were at the festivities. Alderwoman Prather, thank you. I know you're getting in the dunk tank with the water as cold as it was, and I know how cold that was. I felt it, so thank you for that. Alderwoman Frank, thank you very much. Alderwoman Mohaw, thank you very much. Alderman Porter, appreciate it. I don't know if I missed any other aldermen. I wasn't everywhere at once, but I was quite a bit of places, so if I missed anybody, raise your hand. But Alderman Bird, and I know, was holding an event at his business as well, so thank you.
Alderman McGee.
Oh, Alderman McGee. Well, there you go. Well, thank you, everybody. I think it was, again, a wonderful event, and I appreciate the participation. All right, moving on, we have no public forum, reports of officers' boards and special committees, public safety unfinished business, we have none, public safety new business, Police Department update. Chief Woody?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, since last month, the Police Department assisted the Boone County Health Department in conducting 24 tobacco compliance checks to businesses within Belvedere, two sold cigarettes to minors. We unfortunately had to let recruit Sunset Winsler go. She did not successfully complete the field training process, so she, as of June 16, Fire and Police Commission confirmed her termination. Currently in the process, we have two lateral candidates who are either certified or sworn law enforcement officers who are testing with our department. On Wednesday night, we'll have a Fire and Police Commission meeting where we will be revealing their backgrounds and deciding if either qualify to go on to the next phase, which would be the polygraph. We will be conducting entry-level testing starting August 6. The first portion of that will be the physical agility, next followed by the written assessment, and then a peer interview. They will conduct the initial list, and then at that point, anybody that wants to use any type of points such as military or education points can apply for those at that time, and then the final list will be generated after that. August 8, I am happy to announce this, probationary officers Rackley, Smith, and Golden will successfully complete their probationary period. Well, they completed on August 6. On August 8, I'll be presenting them before you and giving them their permanent badges, so we are happy to announce that. That would conclude my report. I'll take any questions if there are any.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Chief, I had gone to a graduation party, and the people there had asked me, they live on Person's Parkway and Dongate Drive, and they had asked me about putting a speed trailer there, because apparently people just screamed through there, and there's that Mahin School Park right there. So when I asked Deputy Chief Gardner, no, Wallace, last week, he said that it had currently been stationed in Wycliffe. Do we only have one?
Yeah, unfortunately, we do.
So, I was thinking that, A, we need more than one, but they have, I looked up this website called Vermac, and they have these speed, they have an SP3248V speed cam. It's a trailer-mounted speed license plate and photo-logging camera system. It's solar-powered by solar panels. It includes the software, and it captures pictures, license plates, and speeds. It's also, it also does like two-lane coverage, so both lanes. It's self-contained and it has an optional data logger. I didn't click on the thing for a quote, so I have no idea how much it would run, but my question to you is, would that be something that maybe would benefit our community, and if it's taking pictures of stuff, then, you know, I was in Washington, DC recently, and I was speeding, and my license plate got a picture, and that ticket was sent all the way to Illinois. So, if we could mail tickets to people with the picture of, you know, that, would that be something that could help our officers and our subdivisions that have, I have a speeding problem going on?
In terms of qualifying for the speed cameras, our community does not. I'd have to defer to Attorney Drell, see if he remembers what qualifications are. Last I knew, when I read it, it was communities of a million population or more, which essentially was Chicago. I know since then, there have been other communities that do utilize them, but ultimately ours do not qualify for that. In terms of the equipment itself, that's something I'd be happy to take a look at, see how much it would cost. If memory serves, the last speed trailer, which is the one that we currently utilize, Deputy Chief Tony Martin at the time was responsible for getting the quotes for that, but I want to say it was roughly $15,000. So, it's a significant expense, one that, you know, if that's the direction that the council would like us to at least investigate and look into, we would probably have to get a quote and see if it's something worth budgeting for.
Yeah, I think that would be another topic for an agenda item, if we get some more information, and certainly put it on a future agenda item at committee level. Yes?
So, if we could get the speed and the license plate pictures, so, and then mail the tickets out, then we couldn't do that, or it wouldn't eventually pay for itself in that way?
No, we simply can't do that. We're not legislated to, legislatively authorized to do that.
Yeah, I think we can probably place it on the agenda and maybe get some of the other answers. I'm sure there's other questions here tonight that we wouldn't be able to answer, Chief.
Yeah, also, in addition to the current speed trailer that we have, I know Officer Blankenship has a list of people that are waiting to utilize that speed trailer. It's, you know, the first step in speed complaints that we get, we get, you know, quite a few of them, and we address as many of them as we can, but the speed trailer tends to be the first step in that process, so that way we can analyze the data that the speed trailer gets, so we can focus our efforts, as opposed to what we've done in the past on certain occasions where we'll conduct patrols out there and not necessarily get the peak speeding drive times, because it's different for different communities. So, we try and use that as a tool to help us isolate the time to more effectively and efficiently utilize our resources.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions for Chief Woody on his update? Okay, hearing done, Chief, you own B and C. Authorization to purchase night vision device for SWAT?
Thank you. If you would, turn to the memo in your packet. In 2019, the SWAT team was called to handle a suicidal subject armed with a rifle. The standoff lasted for hours well into the night. Once night fell, SWAT found themselves having to deal with subject outside with minimal to no ambient lighting. They had difficulty navigating the lighting conditions because they didn't have the proper night vision equipment for the situation. Belvedere Police Department is respectfully requesting authorization to purchase a night vision device in the amount of $4,728.90, a night vision mount in the amount of $516.80, and an adapter for $172.25. Attached, you will find literature for your information pertaining to the request before you. I would request a motion to authorize the purchase of an Eotech MonoNV Gen 3 white phosphor night vision device with Neuroto's Night Vision Helmet Mount Adapter for the total cost of $5,417.95, using funds budgeted and equipment line item, line item numbered listed on the motion.
Okay, could I have a motion that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any discussion? Alderman Porter, and then Alderwoman Frank. Alderman Porter first. He had his hand up first. Alderman Porter?
I just had one question. Didn't we buy one of these already? Is this the second one, or am I thinking of the fire department equipment?
No, due to the significant expense, it is the No, due to the significant expense, it is the intent to purchase one for each team member. We have eight team members that are operators for the city. When I originally asked in two thousand nineteen, we had one. So, every year, I'm budgeting for one to try and minimize the impact to the city with the intent of eventually equipping all eight team members. So, this will be a multi-year request.
Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, but, thank you, Mayor. That was my question. I wanted to know how many we had or how many we were purchasing. Thank you.
All right, uh-huh, you're welcome. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor then to authorize the purchase of Eotech Mono N V Gen Three White Phosphorus, White Phosphor Night Vision Device with Neuroto's Night Vision Helmet Mount and adapter for a total cost of five thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents. Using funds budgeted in, in the Equipment Line Item one dash five dash two one zero dash eight two zero zero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. Chief, continue.
Thank you, Mayor. If you could turn to your memo in the packet. Fiscal year two thousand eighteen, the department identified our portable radios were starting to fail and parts were becoming more and more difficult to find. At that time, we budgeted to replace all fifty-five radios totaling two hundred and seventy-five thousand in the capital expenditures. In an attempt to minimize financial impact to the city by spreading out costs over time and prevent having to replace all the radios at one time, it was decided to budget for four radios per year until the radios had been replaced. Since fiscal year two thousand eighteen, the department has been approved to purchase ten new radios. Police Department is requesting authorization to purchase four new portable radios. The new radios would replace ones that are approximately fifteen years old, not in good working condition. Four portable radios were budgeted for in the Equipment Line Item at a cost of sixteen thousand dollars. As shown on the attached quote from Motorola Solutions, the current cost of each radio is four thousand four hundred and eleven and two cents. This is an approximate three hundred and fifty-five dollar increase from last year's purchase of portable radios. I would request a motion to authorize the purchase of four Motorola Starcom APX four thousand portable radios and accessories for a total cost of seventeen thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars eight cents. Using funds budgeted in the Equipment Line Item, Line Item Number listed on your motion.
Okay, I have a motion that effect, please. Motion by Alderwoman Mohaw, second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussion? Any questions regarding that motion and second? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Chief. We have item D, Fire Department Update. Chief Shadle, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's been five weeks since our last Fire Department update. And in those five weeks, the skilled and dedicated men of the Belvidere Fire Department have responded to three hundred and twenty-seven calls for service, averaging nine point three calls a day. In those five weeks, they responded to ten fires. There was seven within the city. On Whitney Avenue, there was a porch house fire. We had an exterior garage fire on Thirteenth Avenue, stove by, stove fire on Sixth Street. And we had a car fire at one of the local dealerships. On Chrysler Drive, we had a semi docked into one of the major corporations. And it was full of dashboards and something combusted. And so, that was the major fire that we had. We had three fires where we gave aid to other communities. West Suburban, we had a house fire. And South Boyd, a house fire and District Two barn fire. But we also did receive aid on two of our fires. The Whitney Porch House Fire and then the one on Chrysler Drive, we had received aid. We responded to two hundred and twelve EMS calls. We administered CPR three times. We had three narcotic overdoses. And all the, all those survived due to Narcan administration, either by the Police Department. There was one bystander and one from the Fire Department. There was two obvious deaths, eleven chest pains suggestive of a heart attack. We had four seizures, four strokes, fourteen traumas, and one choking victim. We responded to six car accidents, one with injuries and five thankfully without injuries. We had two gasoline spills, three natural gas leaks, two of which were contractors that are doing service work for, I believe, like fiber optic lines. They have hit two of those lines and so they're high pressure gas supply lines. And so, it takes about thirty minutes to, an hour for Nicor gas to respond. They're really quick and they do a really good job. I'm not saying anything. It just takes time to get the trucks there to dig that up and natural gas is free flowing. So, those are a little bit of a larger incident for us when that happens. So, we gotta keep everything safe. We had one house struck by lightning. We had twenty-one public assists, eight illegal burns, and five carbon monoxide alarms. So, those are the major incidents of the three hundred and twenty-seven calls. Last month for training, we had railcar hazmat training. We have an acquired structure that is the city's. We've been training on that. So, we've been doing pre-connect drills and search and rescue drills. We had a SMO update. So, SMOs, those are the standard of care that our paramedics provide the care under. They're legally obligated to do care for certain things in certain ways. It's a two hundred and ninety-page document with all the med doses and everything. So, every once in a while, those SMOs update. So, they had a SMO update. Due to the warm weather and to prepare for water rescue operations, we did do some boat operations and jet ski operations. EMS training this month was on gunshot wounds. We met with a Union Pacific rep to go over railcar safety. And then, the Fire Service Research Institute, they provide research on all of our tactics and everything. And so, when one of their new modules come out, we always make sure to go over that. And they had a really good one just came out on ventilation and suppression and the timing of that. So, the guys went over that. So, I wanted to say thank you to everyone, Public Works and PD, for Safe Heritage Days. There's quite a bit of planning that goes into that. I know with all the barricades, it was difficult to even get my little vehicle into the parade. So, and that, that takes planning and, you know, figuring out how to do that. And it was a, a great event and a safe event. So, also, the VIPs and all, all their help that they provide. So, thank you to them. So, in your packet, the first thing that you guys will see is the updated org chart. Yep? And then, the next couple pages are more for a reference for you guys. Those are just updated roles and responsibilities. So, I put those in there. If you guys are like, well, who takes care of this? Or who do I call for CPR? Or if I want to schedule a, a public education event, you guys will be able to see who does what. Or if you're curious about anything, those are all the major jobs and how we divide them up within the department to make sure that everything gets taken care of. So, I did want to let you guys know, thank you. The engine order was successful. Did not sell from underneath of us, thankfully. So, I appreciate your help with that. On Thursday night, I listed one forty-two for sale on Facebook Marketplace. We have had five thousand eight hundred plus clicks on the ad. And we've had one interested, well, someone, one serious lead on it as of now. So, I will keep you guys up to date with that. And that completes my update. Are there any questions?
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. Concerning CPR training, do you guys do regular annual, semi-annual, public CPR training classes? And are they, I mean, how do you get people to, how do you get people to know about those?
Great question. Anybody can contact the Fire Department. So, normally, we host those on Saturday and it is for the public. A lot of times, organizations will call us and say, hey, you know, all of our daycare providers or all of our school nurses, we all need our CPR cards are going out of date and we need to do that. And so, they'll come in on a Saturday. But you'll see there, Captain Cunningham and Bobby Gunstein coordinate all that. So, they could give them a call, call the station. And then, we would take down a message and get it to them. And then, they could set that up. We'd be happy to do that for anybody.
So, it, it's mainly groups or you do individuals? And how much does it cost for an individual? Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions before we move to the next item for Chief Shadle? All right, hearing none. Chief, how about item E?
So, records, records management software for the Fire Department, there's three things that occupy most of our time. Number one would be responding to calls. Number two is training. And then, number three is documentation. A lot of our documentation, we, every single call that we go on is required to be documented by the National Incident Report, Fire Reporting System. It's something through FEMA. And we, we report all of our calls down to the feds. And that allows us to get any type of grant funding. So, that is a requirement for us to get grant funding. Also, our records management software is used anytime you provide medical care. They want to make sure that you practice the proper standard of care as outlined in your SMOs. And so, we document that we adhered to our SMOs, what was done, what we found, what we saw, medicines, what we gave, things like that, inspections, activities, pre-planning. All of that stuff goes into a records management database. In nineteen ninety-eight, the Belvidere Fire Department bought Firehouse Software. It was an application that goes on a server. And then, we owned that application and we owned the server. Fast forward to two thousand seventeen. In two thousand seventeen, a software company called ESO bought Firehouse and immediately started selling against it. Firehouse was the major records management application in the fire service. So, we kind of knew in two thousand eighteen, I looked in that, that's when I got my first quote from ESO. And, and we knew that the costs were going to significantly increase. The reason that the costs significantly increased is because instead of owning the application and providing it on our servers, that doesn't exist anymore. That was like, you know, when you got a computer that had Microsoft Word on it? And it was yours and you always had Microsoft Word. And maybe a new one would come out and you could pay for an upgrade. But now, there's Microsoft three sixty-five. You don't own that. You just pay for the subscription. So, now, all records managements are subscription services that aren't on our servers. So, the costs have increased significantly. It actually was that way even before inflation happened. So, thankfully, this was something that we had been working on. Like I said, my first quote was in two thousand eighteen and I knew it was a considerable increase in expense. So, we held off. We held off as, as long as we could. A lot of other departments switched over to ESO, District Three, District Two, Rockford. And we thought, well, Firehouse is working. It's doing everything we need to do. We're going to try and prolong that expense as much as possible. So, we found out recently that Firehouse is, has an official end of life where they'll know where, no longer keep it secure and provide updates and things like that. So, that is December thirty-first this year. So, we now have to do something. So, what we did last spring is I put together a committee. It was a small committee. It was two people. Mr. Beck and Jeff Vaughn, two really dig into our options. And they did a ton of work. They kept this nice binder, contains a couple of years of emails and all the information on all of our choices. And they narrowed it down to four possible options. Okay, and that's that spreadsheet that I handed to you. I'll direct you to that. So, we really compared our options. What you have here, Zoll, ESO, Fireworks, and First Do. They have an annual cost. You'll see that gray line across the bottom. And then, you will see below that total cost with implementation and data. So, a lot of these companies will do like one year for free of data transfer. But it's since nineteen ninety-eight to transfer all of that data. So, we looked at three basic things, easy use, you know, does it function, and then price. And the very best solution for us is going to be First Do Software. So, they have, what happened with a lot of the early movers that moved to ESO, they haven't loved the experience of it. And for example, Rockford started using First Do for a couple of their platforms. And then, they're potentially going to switch their, Chief Knott over, makes all these decisions in Rockford. And he's hoping to change direction and go towards First Do. Freeport Fire uses First Do Naperville, Prospect Heights, Roberts Park. So, I just want to point out a couple of things. The least annual subscription is Zoll and that's eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-one. Those are, those are estimates because these other ones are hard prices where they bill you like a dollar per EMS report and a dollar per Enfer's report and eighty cents for an inspection. They literally, every single one of those, I did not find anybody that had good things to say about that system. And when they did the demo, they found it difficult to use and incomplete. And they're a medical company and they're trying to, you know, jump in and cover the space of, of the fire side of it. And so, they did not think that that was a good option. So, the three other companies, ESO, Fireworks, and First Do, they're all right around sixteen thousand. So, in your packet, in the memo, there's a motion at the bottom. What we did is we talked to First Do. And the original price was sixteen-nine that I was going to make the motion for. So, we talked to First Do and we said, is there, you know, can you help us save money? This is a big jump, jump in expense for us. And they said they could help us out. And they gave us almost a ten percent reduction in price. And so, that's that second sheet behind the spreadsheet. You'll see the updated quote. The other thing was, is one option that was in the first quote that I gave you guys was scheduling. Scheduling is something we still do by pen and paper. Is it sometimes inconvenient? Yes, but it's not a need of, right now, to, to document. So, if I take, I took that module out. And what I'm asking for tonight is, before I do that, I just want to also let you guys know that I helped Chief Heiser and this is a budgeted for item. So, we anticipated this expense and we estimated it at about fifteen thousand last year when we did our budget. So, it's budgeted for in line, line item seventy twenty. And so, this is a budgeted for anticipated expense. And I would recommend a motion, motion to purchase an annual, annual subscription, subscription to utilize First Do Records Management Suite at a cost of fourteen thousand seven hundred to be paid for out of line item zero one dash five dash two twenty dash seventy twenty. Thank you.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderwoman Prather. Questions? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So, Chief, this last page, these optional add-ons, you don't need any of those? You're not looking to get any of those? We didn't budget for those?
No, ma'am. The only one that, I mean, I'm trying, I know, I appreciate you guys trying, do only necessary expenses. And the only add-on that we will probably try for next year would be the scheduling for the thirteen hundred. The rest of those were things that... The rest of those were things that I didn't anticipate benefiting us at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you. So who would be working with this software? Would it be Chris or one of your firemen?
Every single member of the fire department, every single day, would touch the software in some way, shape, or form. So anytime we go out on a call, there's reporting. It's literally the third biggest, most time spent that we do. Number one would be calls, and number two would be training, number three would be documentation. So everybody would use it, so it's not just administrative. There's a small one, like invoicing for five hundred dollars is in there. That would be primarily Chris or the inspectors, but nope, the rest of that is for the firefighters. The other part of this records management is that it will help me, and the reason you pull records, I mean, I can get what you put in and what you get out. What I'd get out is like I could search, okay, are there certain timeframes that we are exceptionally busy, and should we consider staffing? Are we properly staffed at this time? You know, you pull that record out. I mean, how I get this information back to you that I provided on the calls and the types of calls, I just, I run reports on our Firehouse Software, and then I can look at the calls and things like that. So to answer your question directly, everyone.
Okay, can I add one more, too? Okay, so Sixth Street would also have access to it.
Yep, so the way that all the records management software works these days is it's cloud-based on their servers, and so it can be accessible by any internet device, or tablet, or phone, and it would come with apps and everything like that. It would actually be hooked into our CAD system at the PSB, and could link call data and times like that, things like that.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So I always appreciate it when department heads come to us with anticipated expenses that they have budgeted for, so thank you for that.
Okay.
You're welcome.
And I will add that, just so that it puts it into perspective, the, I think the budgeted amount up until the change that the chief had talked about regarding, I think you termed it as cannibalizing, the company cannibalizing and the market being completely changed. The city had paid, I think it originally, or at least had paid prior to this, request eighteen hundred dollars annually, and I know the chief and I have chatted about this, and I have, I believe that this has changed dramatically because of what you had mentioned, and our best options are in front of us. I do agree with that. I think it's important that when we talked prior about some of the expenses that we had coming up, some of the unknown, some of the, some of the other expenses that we're going to have, especially when we talked about equipment and being able to, you know, have needs and be able to have wants, I think this is a definite need, and, you know, I understand that, and I think the council does, too, but as far as the wants go, I think we, this shows that we are having, you know, immense increases, prices increases for the price of doing business, not only in public safety, but it's also in, you know, everyday price of fuel, and as we had talked about before. So, you know, I think that's, there are other things that we have in front of us. Brent's going to touch on a little bit of them, but I appreciate it, Chief, and I just wanted to add that, that, you know, this is definitely something that we have to do. We're going to run out of time the end of the year, and it's just, things have gone up tremendously, and we have to find a way, you know, to be able to afford them, so keep that in mind. Anybody else? All right, so the motion is to purchase annual subscription to utilize First Do Records Management Suite at a cost of fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars to be paid out of line item zero-one-five-two-two-zero-seven-zero-two-zero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Make it chief. Thank you. Moving along, Item Three, Finance and Personnel, unfinished business, we have none. Item Four, Finance and Personnel, new business. Item A, update, Ms. Hanson?
Real quick update, Sickich was on-site last week and is also back this week, conducting their final fieldwork for fiscal year twenty-two audit, and so far, everything's been going wonderfully. Hopefully, I didn't just jinx it, but they will be able to wrap up by the end of the week.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, under five other, we have Item A, Public Works, Newburgh Lift, Newburgh Number One Lift Station upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, CES has completed the redesign for the Newburgh Number One Lift Station, and we have received the following proposals to complete the necessary upgrades. We're basically acting as our own general contractor on this project. As far as the pumps and equipment, just to note that we will need a motion to waive the bidding requirement, as we received only two proposals for the pump and equipment, and that total amount is over what were the new purchasing guidelines that were passed here recently by the council. The reason why we had two proposals, we have two pump manufacturers that we recommend, both Grunfoss and Flight, and the proposals you see in front of you, Gas Vodin Associates is the Grunfoss representative, and Xylem Water Solutions is the Flight representative. There's going to be three motions, I'll go through it, and then we can read the motions at the end. As far as the, on the installation goes, Seroni Piping at thirteen thousand six ninety-eight, Stenstrom Excavation and Blacktop at thirty-five thousand one eighteen. I know there's going to be a question on why the big difference in that cost. The only thing I can tell you is that I think one contractor anticipated taking a longer period of time to do the work than the other. This will require bypass pumping, so time, the time element is critical as far as how long it's going to take to execute the work. On the electrical side, we have prices from Angle Electric, seven thousand six eighty-six, and Helm Service at eight thousand six hundred. There's some upgraded breakers that have to be done, there's some larger wire size, because we're going with a little bit larger pump size, so there's a little bit of work that has to be done there. I would recommend three different motions. First motion being to approve the purchase of two fifteen-horsepower Grunfoss pumps, base elbows and stainless steel guide rails from Gas Vodin Associates in the amount of forty-one thousand twenty-nine dollars. This equipment will be paid for from sewer depreciation fund sixty-one seventeen eighty, and again, this will require a motion to waive the requirement at council.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Director Anderson, being so Seroni and Stenstrom are so far apart, are you going to be anticipating change orders?
There's that question. Hopefully, both, well, we recommend Seroni, and hopefully, they're planned to complete that work, and it goes according to that plan, and it's for that cost.
And that'll, that'll be the next motion, so we have this motion, and second on the floor, the motion for Seroni, the piping will come up next. Any questions on the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Brent?
Next motion is to approve the proposal from Seroni Piping in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars for replacement of the pumping equipment at the Newburgh One Lift Station, including bypass pumping. This work will be paid for from sewer depreciation fund sixty-one seventeen eighty.
Okay. Get a motion of that effect? A motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. Second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion on that? I think Alderwoman Freeman touched on that regarding the change order possibility already. Hearing no other questions, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Brent?
And lastly, the motion to approve proposal from Angle Electric in the amount of seven thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars for the electrical upgrades to Newburgh One Lift Station. Again, this work will be paid for from sewer depreciation fund sixty-one seventeen eighty.
Okay. We have a motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions regarding that motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And Brent, that looks like it's it. We do have Item C. For the record, I'd ask for a motion to go on executive session.
Oh, oh, oh.
I'm sorry.
One more.
Oh, you do?
One more.
Okay, I'm sorry, Brent.
That's all right. Again, in your packet, resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code, this is authorization that we require to have from the state to expend our MFT funds. The amount of the resolution is a one million three hundred thousand dollars, included in that is the overlay program, the thermoplastic pavement striping project, as well as the purchase of rock salt for our snow removal operations in the wintertime.
Okay, can we get a motion of that effect? Alderman Stevens' motion, second by Alderwoman Prather. That was an important one, Brent, gee, I moved right, moved right by a million three. All right, Alderman Snow?
Brent, out of curiosity, does any of the MFT money ever go to sidewalks at all, other than for the purpose of making the corners or whatever ADA compliant?
When you say ever, that's an all-encompassing word, so I would say yes, it does. For the most part, we use local funds for most of our sidewalk work. We are required, as you know, because of what with Logan Avenue Project and others, if we use motor fuel tax funds, then all the sidewalk returns have to be ADA compliant. So there's a built-in component to when we do overlays, we also do the corresponding sidewalk work, but most of that is paid for out of public improvement funds, which are local funds.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Brent, MFT, motor fuel tax funds depend on driving, how much people drive, so they fluctuate. Is this amount higher, lower, or is it always stay the same every year?
Well, it's generally the same. This year is a little bit more than last year, only because when we go out to bid, we use our best estimates, best information we have for our estimated costs. Typically, we like to err on the side of cautious, who are on the higher side, but when we get a good price or a decent price, we can't just go in and add streets to that current contract. The state doesn't allow you to do that. So then, for example, last year, we had a million dollars budgeted, we only spent nine hundred thousand roughly on overlays, so that gives us an extra hundred thousand dollars that we can apply to this year. So that's why this year's program is a little bit over a million dollars, proposed to be in overlays. And again, we haven't gone out to bid yet, so we'll know when the prices come in, where we're at. But this year's is a little bit more than usual.
Okay. Any other questions regarding? All right, hearing none. The motion and the second on the floor is to forward to City Council, resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Okay. Now, I would ask for a motion to go on the executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific, of a specific employee or official pursuant to two C one of the Open Meeting Act. Can I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman McGee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?